It's five thirty, we will call this meeting to order. If everybody will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary Kay, roll call, please.
Dr. Dave Merrill?
Here.
Bobby Brown?
Here.
Jemadic Nelson?
Here.
Kristen Maller?
Here.
Yay!
Danny Pye?
Here.
Angie Schreiber?
Here.
JD Trader?
Katherine Solow?
Here.
Okay, we have a form of the board present tonight. Do we have any public comment there? Katie Anne? Okay. Okay, for our public comment, we will give the persons that are signed up to speak a five minute, five minutes to speak. Mary Kay will be that timekeeper for the five minutes to speak. We have one person that signed up and his name is Ethan Roberts. Come on down and speak into the microphone. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Ethan Roberts and I'm a sophomore at the Anago High School. I've come to speak about the new bell schedule for the high school that will be taking place and was implemented by Mr. Rogers and his group of, he says fifteen people. I have so many concerns about this schedule, not only on the effects of it, but also on how it even came to be implemented. My issue with this schedule is deep. We're going from an eight period to a seven period schedule next year and they'll be completely eliminating study hall for every single student if they need or want it. Mr. Rogers has said that the study hall will basically be replaced with a forty-two minute long pride time, which is where you sign up each day to go to a teacher you need help with and have the freedom to get extra help. This was already happening at the high school twice a week for twenty-five minutes with our current eight period schedule. So next year, our day would start with an advisory for sixteen minutes, which will be useless because announcements will take up about half that time. After that time, we then go to pride time, which as I stated before, Mr. Rogers has said it will be an expanded and basically replace our study hall. It might sound good, but I'll tell you, it's terrible. For anyone who needs a quiet place to go, like what study hall may have been, they no longer have access to it because pride time environments are loud because many students don't use that option correctly and instead sign up to go where their friends are and it just makes it loud and impossible to receive help. The study hall we currently had received, which was nice to have a mental break for the day, I think especially when you have such a hard day, it's difficult to perform well in other classes. Also, this is once again, something else that's being taken away from the good students at the high school as the high school continues to focus too much on the bad kids. On top of these concerns, I also heavily worry about the students who emphasized on getting extra credits and working to take classes towards bettering themselves for college. This will eliminate that option for them students. Recently, I've developed a lot of anger, frustration, and disappointment with the handling of this change in the people leading it. I talked to a teacher who said the last straw of them leaving after this year was a change of the bell schedule and how this was even brought up in the communication. This past week, I reached out to the principal and wanted confirmation about the schedule change and wanted my voice heard about it, but let me tell you, like usual, when people have issues with things here, I would send an email back telling me what I expected, that this was not going to change and my opinion will not and does not matter. A petition was created by a student at the high school to oppose this change and within not even a day, it received over one hundred and fourteen signatures of disapproval and another day, it shot over one hundred and seven signatures. I checked out this morning and sat a hundred and ninety-four signatures opposing the bell schedule change. It's not right in the slightest way for people who are supposed to be leaders to not even listen to this. Long story short, that student that created the petition was pulled from class the next day and basically told they should shut the petition down because it won't change the minds of the people leading this. I think that's pretty unfair considering that we live in America and have an American right to exercise the First Amendment. I was also told in an email I received from Mr. Rogers that teachers were invited to come to the meeting and share their opinions. I talked to several teachers who laughed at that email and received, that I received and they called out the bluff. I want to call hypocrisy of this district and this school. You guys claim that we're a team at Anago and we're supposed to work together. Where's the energy when it comes to the high school? Because I can't find it. When I look at successful teams, it's the ones that have leaders who listen to people lower than them. They ask for input, they want to be better, they want growth. Not one since being here in my three years have I or my fellow classmates been asked what we want or what we think would work. You would think major changes that directly affect us as students, we would at least get to have a thought. People should not have to, people should not have to be in student council to even have a say what happens here. So yeah, you look at this team and I think failure has been written all over it for years and it's super unfortunate. I really wish I could say I'm proud to represent my school, but it's hard to do that and/or want to do that when I can't even represent myself here at my own school. Being in sports, I have a chance to talk to people from other schools and consistently, our high school has a terrible reputation. And talking to others, they have told me that these issues do not exist in their schools because it's not run in my way or the highway kind of show like the Anago High School is. My final message and thought to you guys is, I think you need to take another look at leadership in our schools because quite frankly, if I got my degree to be a teacher, Anago would be dead last on my list because I would never and will never be treated as toxic as this place treats their teachers and students. Perhaps this is the reason why we lose so many very talented, experienced, and caring teachers on a yearly basis in such high numbers. I really wish I could say I'm proud to be here, be proud to be from here like other teachers and students are proud of school districts like Medford, Rhine Land, or Mosley and other places. In, can I have one more pair? In closure, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Sprague. I think you have been such a fantastic superintendent for this school district. I definitely have a lot of respect for you. You're always very helpful and kind and easy to reach. I definitely think it speaks to the kind of leader you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan, for taking the time last week to reach out to me and I talked with Dr. Sprague about you coming and this is whenever we decided she sent you an email to come and speak at tonight's board meeting. So thank you so much for coming. I will say that I have been in communication with Dr. Sprague about this issue and that's, that's really all that I can say at this point. But thank you very much. Okay? Item number two, new business, letter A, twenty twenty-two, or I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, insurance renewal. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the Aspiras health insurance plan options as presented with an increase of twelve percent, including keeping the deductible at seven thousand fifty dollars single and fourteen thousand one hundred family, requiring staff electing to take the benefit, pay the equivalent of thirteen point five percent of the freedom premium or the equivalent of eight point one five percent of the signature premium.
Motion has been made by Dr. Vardo. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. It was brought to the finance committee by Katie Anne. We listened to her presentation explaining how we went from twenty-four percent down to twelve percent and this, I'm sure, is as low as we can get. So I will be recommending that we pass this motion and if there are no other board questions at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Katie Anne so she can go through the process.
Katie Anne, come on up to the mic, please.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you guys for getting together for special meeting. This is renewal time and we'd like to open up our open enrollment in a week and so that's why it had to be done now and not after the fifteenth. So, I just want to speak to a couple of things because a twelve percent isn't exactly what we all hope for, but I do want to kind of give some context as to why it is that. Medical trend this year is trending around seven to nine percent across the board due to return of the flu, COVID impacts, you know, limited labor in the medical profession. More people are taking Cobra and then general CPI impacts. So we knew that we were in the realm for an increase. And when we were originally in our committee meetings, they were saying to expect anywhere from like nine percent to like fourteen percent. I was still not happy with the fourteen and being a new business director, I wanted to justify if I had to ask you for that, to be able to explain. So I did turn us out to quote, not wanting to have to switch insurance companies because that is a big load on all employees, but to be able to see once how closer, at least in the ballpark, Aspiras was with the rates. And so initially, they served us with a twenty-four percent increase, but that never made it to my desk due to our third-party consultant, which I appreciate. I probably would have stroked and then come back. They reduced it down to twenty-one after looking at all the papers and then she got them down to a sixteen and a half percent blended. That number was given to me the day after we went out to quote and justified why I had done so. And so I was kind of talking with them to break down the numbers a little bit more. We offer two plans. We offer a signature plan, which is like an in-network for Aspiras, and a freedom plan, which adds a few more providers and encompasses all of the signature as well. So it's a little bit more widespread for care. We have seventy, or fifty-six employees enrolled in the freedom plan and a hundred and seventy-five in the signature. They normally give us rates just based off of those numbers due to what liability that employee on those plans can cause the insurance company potentially. When I had them dig deeper, seventy-seven percent on the freedom plan that brought our network never utilized outside of the signature plan. And so they got really looking at it and thinking, okay, we can maybe bring that down. And so then they initially brought back a fourteen percent. After speaking to some of my counterparts across the state, I found out that some that were, had higher loss ratios than us were getting an eleven and I questioned them on it and they brought it down to a twelve. We do have more high-cost claimants, what we understand, you know, it all depends on what's on your plan at the moment. So we came in at a twelve percent blended, which means that is twelve percent for both plans, no breakdown. We did then get our quotes from the other companies that decided to quote for us. WPS declined to quote. Security Health came in at a twenty-two percent over our current rate. Anthem came in at eighty-two percent and UHC came in at about a seventy-eight percent. So it was easy to make the decision. We were going to stick with Aspiras and they at least entered our sandbox. So I was happy with that, with the twelve percent. What does that mean for our employees and us as an employer? So with the twelve percent increase, we're looking at about rounded numbers, four hundred thousand dollar increase overall with our health insurance for the year. Our vision is staying steady and our dental is as well. Vision, we are out and have a provider. Dental, we are self-insured still. So with looking at that breakdown of that four hundred thousand, about three hundred and sixty-two thousand is district portion due to the rest being the premiums that employees pay. So what does that mean for an employee? On a single signature plan, it is an increased cost of about five dollars and forty-two cents a month. So, and then for a family on that plan, about thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents a month. I am proposing that we accept the twelve percent and we do not change the employer-employee portions at this time or our deductible. Tim did a lot of work with getting that kind of in the sweet spot last year and I feel that is still good this year. Next year, with different costs, what we may have to reevaluate, but I bring forth just leaving things as is, accepting the increase, increasing both equally and staying that route. Is there any questions?
Any of the board members have questions for Katie Anne?
I do.
Angie, go ahead.
Any kind of, I'm trying to get a hold of what it is. Benefit if, if an employee can prove that like their health so that they're walking so much, you know, per day or per week or where their cholesterol is or anything like that, is there a break for them or is it just straight across?
So it is straight across and Jesse, if something sparks that you know that I don't, you've been in this longer, Jesse is part of our committee. So I appreciate that, by the way, he always has great input. And so there's nothing that you get rates on that, but they do provide a health stipend towards either a fitness membership or if you can prove that you have like a Fitbit and give them your weekly report that you do work out, you do get a discount. So there is like, if you can prove fitness ability and that you're doing it on a regular basis, they do give a discount for them.
Okay.
Are there still other incentives as well? I recall teachers talking about submitting like time and then you can earn gift cards or things like that? Or is that absolutely no?
I think that was completely Vitality program back in the day.
Oh, Vitality.
I don't know if that's still.
I don't think so. We switched to Aspiras last year and I think that was with W.
Jesse, you want to come over to the mic, please?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Canetter.
Yeah, so we used to have Vitality. It was through WEA, but it'd also be through Aspiras. It was underutilized, but it was some sort of incentive program. So I think the cost for us to have it wasn't really making it beneficial. So that went to the wayside. Like she was saying, we do have the option where if we are going to different fitness centers and whatnot, we can get little reimbursements for doing that. We still have two hundred and twenty-five dollars that we can spend towards, or get reimbursed towards a fitness place, which I know a fair amount of teachers use, not enough, but for example, it's two hundred and twenty-five, which matches the cost of the pool. So that's what my family uses it for, basically gives us a free pool membership for our family that we go out and use. So Vitality went to the side with WEA along with not really using it that much.
Are there any other questions?
Did we utilize the third-party, any other quotes or just with Aspiras?
Yeah, so the third-party is the, is the one who puts us out to quote and then she's able to, Michelle is our rep. She's able to explain and give them our, what's called a census and so that way they can quote us apples to apples. And so they do all that legwork.
Are there any other questions?
So was Aspiras the only one willing to come down from their initial quote to us through that process?
Correct. When you go out to quote and companies initially quote you, they kind of quote you at the best they can knowing that they either want you or they don't. You know, Anthem and UHC at an eighty-two and a seventy-eight kind of wasted their time. And to be completely honest, a lot of districts across the state, if they didn't recently go to Aspiras, there are a lot going to Aspiras this year. Hence the reason I kind of played hardball at the end there. I was hearing what other places were coming in at going, hmm, you know, you've got enough coming your way that maybe you can work with us a little more and so. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Katie Anne?
Good job on playing hardball.
I, I questioned, what if I would have rolled over at sixteen and a half? And so I'm glad I did. I'm like, I don't know if this is my place, but I'm going to do it. So I did it. It was good.
Are there any other questions for Katie Anne? Third and final time, are there any other questions for Katie Anne? Hearing no questions, you have a motion on the floor and that motion is to approve the Aspiras health insurance plan options as presented with an increase of twelve percent. The motion is on the floor. Dustin, if you'll open up the voting device. Are we ready? Okay, would anybody like to change their vote? See nobody move, the voting is now closed. Dustin, would you reveal? And the motion passes.
It does look like Catherine Solow and maybe JD's.
I don't have.
Did you look on the back of your? You don't have?
Oh, okay. So I, sorry.
Mary Kay, just please make note that that was not JD's voting, but that was Katherine voting. Okay? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Dustin, for seeing that. All right, at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting. Motion's been made. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
All in favor of adjournment, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And it's carried, this meeting is now adjourned.
It took me a long time to realize that my knees are in the back and I never check it. So I don't want you to feel.
We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Kay, if you could take roll call, please. Angie Driver?
Here.
Katherine Solow?
Here.
Andy Marion?
Yes.
Jake Weidman?
Here.
Dr. Julie Sprague?
Here.
Danny Pye?
Here.
Okay, Mary Kay, do we have anybody for public comment? Okay. Moving on to item A of new business, middle school window bids. Jake? I'll leave it up to you.
Okay, so in the board docs, you can see the bids that we had. We held two separate walkthroughs for contractors. The first one was not as well attended as we wanted, so we held another one. We had three contractors that were very involved up to bid day and at the last second, Sher did, did have a problem with one of their subs. So they declined to submit a bid at the last minute. But we did get the other two, two bids. As you can see, they are higher than the projection. I'm going to talk about that a little bit in a minute, but they are relatively close, which always means that at least the spec was understood by both. There's nothing missing within, within bid that I'm worried about. If you see big differences, then, then you start to worry if something's incomplete. We did have an opportunity to talk with both of the contractors, make sure that they didn't have anything missing or felt good about it and is, feels good about the bits. Given that they are a little bit high, I have, so until we award a contract, you know, these numbers need to stay not public because if something were to happen and we didn't award it, we can't be sharing their, their detail. But for your benefit, to understand where we're going to end up, I need to show you some detail. So I'm going to pass out a document. I'm going to ask that you don't publicly say any of the numbers on this document. And then I'll collect them at the end just for, to keep, to keep protection for the contractor because like I said, if, if their numbers get broke down, that, that really hurts them. Thank you. Thank you, Danny. So basically, when you look at the budget numbers, that was what Bray came to us last fall with and gave us that projection between the two-one and two-three. The base bid that NASSI did submit was the, the next number there. Within that number, I, within the original budget, was just the window column. That was what the difference was from Bray's projection to what it actually came into. Does that make sense?
Yes.
No. No. His projection was two, two point three.
Yep, two point three was their, was their budget projection that they gave us. The base bid that NASSI came in with is the portion under the windows.
Okay.
So that, that's apples to apples. When you look at what Bray projected to that bid, those are the two numbers that we're looking at. On top of that, I had them add the blinds and the doors and we can elect to do what we want with those. But specifically, I want to look at the number under the window column and the two point three. That difference is what we were above their projection and I just wanted to highlight that so you understood where we ended up from their budget number to the actual bid. It is a little bit higher. Unfortunately, anytime you, you know, you look at these, these numbers were given to us in twenty twenty-two, the construction isn't going to happen until twenty twenty-four. So that's two years typically in good years before COVID. Construction inflation is pretty reliable that it's going to be at least four percent a year. Over COVID, I've seen stuff jump up, you know, thirty, forty percent in some cases, not all across the board, but it's just very spread at how much it changes. So I think that that explains why it went from the two-three to what it is now. Whoever wants to see it coming any higher, but that's just the reality. Any questions on just that portion?
On the windows?
Yeah. Okay. Then the blinds was not in their projection and I had them add that. I don't know that we will need every one of them, but that's how I had them bid it. That would be blind on every single window in a classroom. I think that there's some that we could probably not, we don't, might not need, but I want that number in case we do need them. Same thing with the doors. As I told you at the beginning, I added that, just they were there doing the work anyways. It wasn't really any added cost for us to figure out that number. Those doors are on my list as well. And since they're there, it'd be nice to, to do that if we could afford it, is why I had them add that as an alternate as well.
When you, when you're talking about the blinds, are you saying the blinds within the window panes or are you?
They're exterior, correct, exterior. Because when they're within the window panes, then you forego the dual-pane insulated window. So these are just exterior blinds. But if you look, a lot, a lot of teachers will close the blinds when they show stuff on their smartboard. There's, there are things like that. So I, I expect that we would need a majority of them, but I just wanted to highlight that that was not in Bray's projection when they gave us the two-one to two-three.
Are these like special kind of outside blinds, like?
Not really, no. There's just a lot of them. And I don't have the exact count and breakdown in sizes, but that's something that I would definitely look at with, with contractor.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
Are the blinds inside the window?
No.
Nope.
I just think that that's a lot of blinds.
I can get more breakdown on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions and, and more numbers and stuff that I want to, to digest within the bid, but.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, you know, we can't, I don't want to talk in, in detail before that a contract's awarded because it really, it really is unfair to the contractor to have their, their numbers revealed.
Sure.
So that brings it to the total column that you can see and then the way Bray's fee structure is, it breaks at a certain dollar value. So that's why one is less than one is more. And then the last column would be the total project built in if we did everything within that line. So the, the top number would be windows, blinds, doors. The second line would be just the windows and the blinds and the third line would just be windows. That is obviously over where we wanted to be and where the, the budget number was. So I talked with Dr. Sprague and Katie Anne about where, where we're at, how that looks. There's a couple of different ways to look at it. Katie has some numbers that she'll share. So I guess with that, I guess I'll let Katie take it over from here and we can answer more questions.
All right. More paperwork, guys. And this one, and get put out. I just, I apologize if you have time to do this stuff.
Thank you.
I mean, it can, yeah. Yeah, it would be out on board.
I understand the sensitivity.
Yep. I mean.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. So what I did is I kind of looked at what was approved. We approved two point three and at that time, we had two secured, two, two million. And so with that two million, if you look at estimated cost of the project, that entails Fund Forty-Six, which we have one point two million in at the current moment and Essar funds of eight hundred thousand. With looking at the, you know, rounding numbers a bit, three point four would be the highest we would be looking at potentially. And so last fall, when I first started, there was a PSC Energy grant that was brought to my attention. That's a yearly grant and we have time to prepare to write for that. We could potentially write for up to one million and that would be our intent is to write for that and see what we get. That grant, whatever we're awarded, if we are awarded, would be first off that amount of project. Then we would dip into Essar funds and then Fund Forty-Six. Now, Essar funds, we may have additional funds available, but we won't know that until a little more into this next school year when we know if all the positions are being filled or. when we know if all the positions are being filled or if they're not. And so Essar has a possibility to increase as well as Fund 46, which we would know in July when I do my final analysis of this current year's budget and if there is money to shift over to Fund 46. I am expecting a shift to occur. I do not know an exact amount yet. We have some outstanding bills that I would like to get processed prior. So to move forward, but we can definitely ask is a potential approval of the maximum of 3.4 with the breakdown that we talked about here above. And if we are not able to secure any of that, then Jake goes back to the drawing board with the contractor and works out what we can and what we can't do. But we definitely, you know, to be able to at least take that next step, this is kind of the best plan of action at the moment. Any questions in regards to the finance side? No? Okay.
There are some... I think there's some low hanging fruit that if we don't get the grant and we need to reduce cost, I think we can reasonably reduce the overall cost. But for the purpose of writing that grant, I would really like to be able to have that full amount. I mean, these items aren't going to go away if we don't do them now, and they're only going to get more expensive. So I would like the ability to proceed to try and do the full scope, you know, the 3.4, that line one, do everything on there. But if we deem that we can't do it financially, as Katie said, then I will have some, you know, Plan B worked in with the contractor
Okay.
to reduce that scope and get us back into budget if we need to.
Okay.
So that low hanging fruit amounts to a million bucks?
I don't know that. I mean, obviously, you can see the doors. That would be the first one that I'd probably take. Then there's a couple... There's a couple larger windows that are in the 53 edition, the gym, old gym, that those I think are a high-dollar window likely that we could... You know, they're not a classroom space necessarily. I mean, I understand that a gym is still a learning environment, but I don't think that they're as important as a classroom window that I would look to try and reduce the price by taking some of those out, some of the more expensive, not necessary, or I shouldn't say not necessary, not as impactful on than learning environments. I would try to prioritize that and work with the contractor to reduce the cost if needed.
And at this point, we're already beyond the point where we would consider option one as opposed to option two?
Technically, no, but we would have to basically tell the contractor that these bids are not accepted. Then we would have to rework the spec through Bray, put it reback out for bids, and then see where those numbers come in.
Any other questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Jake, can you talk a little bit about your capital improvements in your plan? The Anago Middle School door replacement cost in there and the doors that you're speaking about is specific to these schools. What are the differences? Sorry.
When anybody wants to speak, if I could ask that you come down to the mic so that people at home can hear you. That'd be great. I'm not going to make a repeat, but just for future.
So the question was, is the door number on there on my tenure maintenance plan, which is 675,000, does that include the exterior doors? The answer is most of them, yes. There was... There are three doors that I have replaced probably within the last five or six years. So I didn't have that on my priority list that I had to replace them. So those would be excluded. But for the most part, that would be exterior and interior doors. Now, like in those numbers are a couple of years old now, so I expect that number to be slightly higher as well. That's kind of the nice part about getting these extra numbers as ad alternates is it helps me keep my numbers as accurate as I can. But they're still never perfect until you put a bid out.
So the rest of that is interior doors?
Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing other questions, then we'll go ahead and move this on to the full board for them to look at it and vote on it and have the next board meeting.
And we're comfortable or understand that we're going to ask to be approved to go with the highest amount?
Yes.
Knowing that if budgetarily we need to reduce, we will?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item B, Facilities Task Force update. And I believe we have Lori Miller from the Donovan Group on Zoom.
Yes, so if those of us up front want to sit there so we can see her, she'll be logging. Well, there she is. Thank you. Hi, Lori.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, just give us one minute to transition.
Absolutely.
Yes. No, no, no. The first papers that Jake handed out, if you can give those back to him, please, so as to not get them to community. She's going to be looking at me.
Okay. Lori, can you hear us okay?
Yes, yeah. I think as we move forward, if I struggle to hear, I might have to have a mic pulled up to someone, but I think for the most part, I can hear okay.
Okay. So we are sitting in our media tech room. We have all nine board members here tonight, which is really exciting. And some central office staff and also some guests. So I would like to introduce you to Lori Miller from the Donovan Group. Some of you may remember her. She took part in our strategic planning process this past summer. And in board docs, you'll see a draft of our facilities roadmap. So if I may just draw your attention to that, Lori will tell you a bit about herself and her experience in this area. But when I met Dave and Danny most recently, we really wanted you to see this draft, and that will be one of the focal points of our discussion tonight. So with that, Lori, I turn it over to you.
Oh, thank you. I'm really grateful to have this opportunity to be able to speak to you all. And I am going to just do a quick introduction to myself. I am a native first and foremost of Wisconsin, but I'm coming to you from Florida tonight. This is where I currently live. And my background is I have 26-plus years of educational experience, first as a teacher, then as a director of curriculum instruction. And then the last six years in Wisconsin, I served as superintendent of schools in the school district of Barrow. And through that time, I had pleasure and joy of working with the board and community there to pass a number of Capitol referendum projects. And so this is something that I really enjoy, digging into the work of facilities and looking at the needs of schools and help to tell stories that help us prioritize where we want to go in addressing those needs. So a little bit about the Donovan Group. The Unified School District of Anago is contracted with us to have access to everything we can provide through communications, public relations, anything from social media content all the way up to referendums, strategic planning, and everything in the middle. And you have that at a fixed fee. So when we talk about moving forward with the Facilities Task Force and having our support and facilitating it, please know that you are already paying for the service. There's no additional cost or charge. Tonight, our purpose is to review the draft roadmap. That was kind of the charge last time I talked to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, that you would like to kind of see a sample roadmap of what would serve as a guide for us as we work through a Facilities Task Force process. This is a process that we have leaned into heavily at the Donovan Group. We've used it with a number of school districts, particularly school districts in the state of Wisconsin, and we have found to have a lot of success. The reason we believe that this process that we're sharing with you tonight is successful is the intention to gain deeper levels of engagement with all of your constituents, whether we're talking about internal staff, your families, even thinking about how we engage students around those needs. And then also, how do we engage the greater community in Anago and your surrounding areas? So tonight, it's an opportunity to review the draft, and this is a process that you will own as a board. And my role is to really help you facilitate and have success with the process. I'm here to offer any kind of needs and services that you have. But again, just want to reiterate that this is your process to own, and we want to make sure that we're giving you our best and helping you facilitate and have success. So with that, I'd like to just kind of walk you through from a high level the roadmap and give you a chance to provide some suggestions for any revisions that you'd like to see or ask questions that you may have. And we'd ultimately love to settle in on some dates and get us started. So first of all, does everybody have a copy of the roadmap that Julie was referencing? Okay? So when you look at what we did here, we started with May. I recognize that we're already into May, and this is just a suggested timeline that we're able to adjust when we're ready to launch, if you will. But tonight, if you look at the first one, planning and key messages, we're really defining the process tonight while we're talking as a group. And so we're already launching into this work. And we also have on the second item there, task force meetings. We can get clear in terms of when do we want to start, what dates we want to use, and the structure that we'd like to use. I think that that would be good progress for this evening. As you look at the month of May, or at least the actions that are identified there in the month of May, it's really about that launch. How do we start to share with everybody and announce that this is work that the board is starting to shift towards? And how people can expect to be able to engage with you all as you work through the process? You'll note that there's an attempt, at least with this process, the last item in May, to get staff feedback. One of the things that we've learned from work with other districts and also my personal experience as a superintendent is the value of having board members, in particular, meet with staff and also subgroups of your staff. So whether it's food service, custodial maintenance, asking them what kind of challenges do they see in their workspaces? And it gives you a good sense of maybe the impact the facility may or may not be having on the full operations and capacity that a school system has. So that we do find a very valuable task to complete. Recognizing that challenge of that with our timeline might be that school year is racing to the end right now, and having access to staff could be a little bit of a challenge. But if you have the stamina, we have the stamina to do it, and we're happy to start with that. As we move into the next steps of the roadmap, you'll see that, like on the left-hand side, there are a number of items that are listed out as communications. That's intentional to make sure that the production team that I oversee with my partners, they have a copy of the roadmap too, and they make sure to complete all of these projects for us as communications to keep everybody informed in Anago of the work that is transpiring with the Facilities Task Force. You'll see that when it comes to meeting with individuals, some of that communications work is creating agendas in collaboration with you all. It's developing slide decks as you need them. Any kind of visuals that are needed, we create that as well. You'll see that there's effort to collect photos and videos. So this is work that's done onsite while I'm there to capture what I like to call the uglies, the ugly pictures. And what I mean by that is let's tell a good story to everybody about what those needs are and really have a deep understanding, so capturing the content of what the challenges are in your buildings. You'll see then, late in June and early in July, or I should say, late in June, late in July, it's actually opposite, early June, late July, we have targeted some task force meetings. These would be meetings that I envision the board members and your leadership opening up a school to have anybody from the community come in and hear just briefly what you all are initially identifying as needs in your facilities, but also allowing people to have voice and share with you their concerns and maybe what their priorities are with your facilities. It's an opportunity to just kind of gather, right? To listen and to gather. Julie, have your hand up.
I do, and you saw that. So I was wondering if the board would like to comment on that. We have a number of people who have signed up or expressed interest in being on our task force. Mary Kay, that number is roughly...
Five, that I've got.
About five so far. So is the board comfortable if we pose it as a public meeting and if anyone else wants to join us that night? Is that what you all envisioned? Danny is saying yes, so...
Yeah.
Because five, I know we were hoping for a greater number, but this, if it's posted as such, might give those who are interested and just didn't take the time to commit, to show up and go from there.
Julie, I think there were some that were very interested but just didn't commit yet until they see the plan ahead. So there may be more that actually wants to commit after seeing the plan.
Okay. So actually, Lori and I had that discussion. If we say task force, it is somewhat synonymous with community engagement because anyone could come, let's say, to the third meeting even if they hadn't been at the first two. But I want to make sure that's what you envisioned as board members.
Yeah. Lori, is it possible to, in addition to making a post, but also to put like a video, like a Facebook reel or TikTok video or something like that? Put that together so that we can share that as well because those get generally more engagement?
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. I'm just going to make a note while you're saying it. I love that idea as a social media post, and that's to seek more participation on the task force?
Yes. Yep. Because you want to invite community members, not just families of the school, but also the whole community.
Got it. Yeah, and one of the things that we've done with other engagement opportunities is as we complete a session with, you know, just an all-call, people can come in, we'll put up a QR code on the slide for people to scan with their cell phones, and they can indicate interest that way too, like, hey, I came to this session tonight. I want to continue to be involved moving forward, and they can share that interest that way as well.
And Lori, so will you be putting this only on the district's website and the district's Facebook page? Can the Donovan Group look at other local, you know...
Yeah.
Like for example, we have an annual information page. That's where the community on Facebook, that a lot of people follow and everything. So could we utilize that as well as the district?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. That's not a problem at all. I think that's a great idea. Okay? So the idea is really to have like these two, like initial engagement sessions, so providing two opportunities for the same type of event, for people to come in, hear initial needs, and also provide us some feedback and share their interest in engaging as we move forward with the process. One of the things we talked about at the last Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting is whether or not the board wants to pass a resolution as an official charge to the task force to come forward with recommendations at the completion of their meeting process for the full board to take action on. And that's something, again, you don't have to decide tonight, but it is built into the process if that's the direction that the board would want to go. Along with that, we then typically create a one-page, what we call a flyer that shows, here's the work that we're going to start engaging in as a task force. Here are the members that are going to make up that task force, and here's a little bit of our... timeline. And we keep everything front-facing for the public so that they know what's going on throughout the entire process. When we get to the month of July, or in the flow of where July is showing on this roadmap, we start to create a survey. Now, a survey is not necessary. Like, some school districts don't want to survey their community. I, I think there's a lot of value in surveying the community because it gives you an opportunity to not only seek their feedback, but it's also another way to inform the community about some of the needs that you're seeing in your, in your district. So that's something, again, that doesn't have to be decided tonight, but it will be definitely a part of the conversations of the facilities task force and the board moving forward, that will we, will we go ahead with the survey? And the survey work is something that, again, is included in all the things that we provide you as service, and we have a lead survey strategist in Wisconsin that is very familiar with the kinds of questions and strategies with surveys for the state. From there, you'll start to see that where it says in August, Task Force Meeting Number Three, that's really the first initial meeting of the set facilities task force. And we have allotted four meetings to complete the work of the task force, which essentially the task force is reviewing all of this, this content that we've been gathering about the needs, looking at your tenure study, listening to what we're hearing at these community engagement sessions, what we're hearing from staff, and compiling a list of all these needs and prioritizing. It might include touring the buildings, which I highly recommend because I'm not sure people get into the buildings, right? And really get behind doors and see what's going on. The worst thing ever is to commit to doing some kind of renovation to a building and get everything lined up with bids and construction, and then peek behind a wall or a door and realize that you have a half a million dollar project that you didn't know was sitting there. So we really want to make sure that we, we look behind every corner and under every rock, if you will, to see what the true needs are. So when the task force is ready, they complete a, a form or a report for the board, for the full board, that then is presented at the board, and it can be presented numerous times, because I anticipate one time, the first time it'll be, here's what we've learned, here's about a little bit about a process, and here's our initial set of recommendations. The full board is going to want to walk away from that and kind of think about that, contemplate, and then come back and consider if there's any action as second presentation. And you'll see that that's all mapped out here as a draft. We did include in the roadmap, and Julie has highlighted it, suggested dates for meetings, and would love to, again, have your feedback on that. My goal is to be onsite for all of these dates for you all. And if I'm not there, one of my counterparts in the Donovan Group will be, but again, it's my goal to have myself be there for all of it. So those are dates that work within my travel schedule to be with you all. Other than that, I think that that just kind of gives you the high, the high-level view. I don't know if it's necessary to go through every line of the roadmap. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Again, a lot of the focus is on communicating and engaging with your community so that if at the end of this process, that you feel one of the solutions, or the solution to your facilities, is to engage the, the community with a, an elected, you know, a ballot question, then, then this really sets you up to have a lot of that engagement done prior to going to the community with that ask, as well as just this proposed timeline does position you well for when it would be appropriate to even go to the voters with anything like that. So we were intentional to set the roadmap up that way for you. So I guess I'm going to stop and let you just react. Give me some thoughts and reactions if you want to make any adjustments. Something doesn't make sense to you? Time to ask questions.
If I may ask the board, do you have any interest tonight in checking your calendars or even availability to see if those highlighted dates work? There are a few that have options. And based on Lori's recommendation, and then meeting with Dave and Danny, who gave me county and city board meeting nights to avoid, we have our board meeting nights and committee nights, city and county, so what you see should not conflict with any of those.
I guess I have, I have a question surrounding the, the meeting schedule. We're only, we're meeting once a month, except for in August, like we're, there's two in August?
Right.
That one's remote. Would it, just for the sake of time, would it, would it be better to meet twice a month to kind of push up the, the progress of this, where it's dragging it out to the end of the year?
That's definitely a, a possibility. My caution around it is that I'm not sure the work can be done that quickly in some cases. In some cases, it could. Like, sometimes it would make sense to meet fairly quickly after just finishing a meeting, but in some cases, there's some work that needs to be done in between meetings that takes that time. I would say we could set the first couple of meetings, Julie, and we can assess along the way. You know, if we want to move, move to a more frequent schedule, we could definitely do that.
I just think that that's a good idea because not only is it, it kind of pushes, you know, the progress a month, but then it also keeps the people that are, are attending the task force engaged versus every once a month, and you kind of, people kind of trail off. Right? So that was just something I wanted to ask about.
I think we can be flexible with that. Not a problem.
In your experience, is this pretty common at a current schedule, once per month?
Yes. Yeah, it is pretty, it is pretty. And actually, I would, I would, I don't know, I made that face, sorry. I, I think it depends on each district, right? Each district has its own set of contexts and variables that they're managing at the same time. This is a pretty aggressive schedule from my lens. I think it's, it's quick-moving compared to some of the work that maybe I've seen with other districts. Sometimes districts will spend over a year with the facility task force. So, you know, I, I think this is a, a pretty aggressive pace, but again, I, I think what's important for all of us to keep in mind is that we want to be responsive to the needs of the facility task force once it's created and once it starts its work. If we need to adjust, we adjust, and we make sure that we respond to the needs as they evolve.
Do you think we'll put the meetings on YouTube or probably not? Sort of like these four meetings?
The question is, have you ever livestreamed meetings in your previous experience with this?
Yes, yeah. A lot of times, that's a request, because sometimes task force members can't make every meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
I think the only other thing that I kind of, I like the idea of keeping people engaged, but, and the one thing that I see kind of that would be a crunch would be the tour date and the principal talking date. I mean, maybe we break those up as like we do a sit-down working meeting and then a tour of a building a month, sit-down, or maybe two buildings in one night. I think trying to fit all in one night would, would not do it justice for people to really be able to see and, and kind of have the time to like, think about and consume what, what's there. So that could be how we can keep them engaged as well as kind of breaking that up a little bit.
Right.
So, just a question. So basically, if I heard correctly...
I can hear you okay. You're good.
The first two meetings are basically when we're going to have people who are interested going around to see the schools, correct?
Correct. So the first, the first two sessions, the task force meeting one and two, are really intended to be like an open door for anybody in the community within the organization to come in here just initially about the task force process, what you all are initially identifying as needs for your facilities, and giving an opportunity for people to provide you feedback about what their concerns are.
Not tours, though.
Not tours during those first two, no.
I wanted to clarify that. Not tours, though, correct?
Okay. Then, if we really think about it, as you look at the agenda, there's only four meetings for the task force.
Correct.
Who made the commitment. Two in August, one in September, one in October. So basically, if you're looking at four meetings in three months, I think that will keep them invested, because it is a short timeline.
So Lori, I do have a question. This is Danny. I, I'm wondering, whenever we do the tours, how beneficial would it be for, for the people on the task force to actually see a day at operation at the schools? Because you could walk into the buildings with no kids, and it's hard to visualize what the principals are asking for, why this facility is, is small, and we, you know, we have to do so many pull-outs, music on a carton, et cetera, et cetera. I wonder if we can have that as a tool also, as touring the facility during the day when school is in operation?
I, I think that's ideal. I, I love that, and let's make it happen. If you're open to that. A lot of times, boards aren't open to that because they're worried about safety, but I, I think that we can manage the safety of our students and your, your size of a district, then I think there's a lot of value for people to see the challenges upfront and close and personal, if you will.
I definitely support that entirely. I think not just for this, but it's, it provides a different perspective and significant value, so I would strongly support that recommendation.
I think it'd be great if we did that on a day that the principal can pick what is the most activity day, where they're pulling things around, kids going to a room for 10 minutes here and there. So that would be a, a timing issue, scheduling the time for us to go in and see that.
I think we should do it, for sure.
I agree with you on the importance of that, but then it also brings up the fact that if somebody were to, like, say somebody's on the task force that works during the day, then that really limits who can be in that tour.
Yeah, that would be something that we would have to disclose in the very beginning, because, you know, some people can move their schedules to be gone for about an hour or so to go make a tour. That could work. And unfortunately, you know, school's going on during the day, and that would be the best time. And if you can't make it, you know, then it'll be up to the rest of those members that are there to help convey the message that was picked up on that day.
Is it possible to, to do like a, like a video tour as well?
Yeah, it is.
Because of not being able to.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. I've done that numerous times, and with, with, you know, there's a couple ways to approach, right? We can definitely do it where we're videotaping it for those who can't be there. I've had the opportunity in the past to kind of hold a luncheon, like during the lunch hours, for people to come to the building so that they have a little lunch and then walk and talk about the facility, and that's usually a good time to see challenges in the building too, because I'm assuming your cafeterias are crowded.
I'm not sure we want to do that, Lori.
Yeah.
You could set up the parking lot.
Most Wisconsin schools are crowded at cafeteria time. So, yeah, I think, I think all of that we can definitely do, and that doesn't scare me at all. I think that, that should definitely be part of our process.
Do we have to like blur kids' faces on a video or is it just?
We have families, parents sign if they don't want any pictures posted, but the main thing is that we don't identify children by name, but we would make certain we're not photographing anyone who has asked not to be. And principals have those lists. It's very small.
I was going to say, it's probably a really small list. It's easy to manage, yeah.
I, I agree it's a good idea. I, I always think buildings look pretty good when they're going empty. How about coffee there?
I have expressed for many years the importance of going in our buildings during the school slash work day because it is a far different perspective to see when our staff and students navigate hour by hour.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, so you think it's like a five-minute video or a minute-long video of just how grand it is, probably?
I would, I would support that.
Just share on Facebook somehow, like, that'll be, that'll get a lot more people that who can actually go in.
That, and, you know, again, if you get to the point, if the solution of all of this comes through, you're going for an ask later, there's a lot of value in having that video content to create like time lapse video to show things speed up, just to show how crazy, right? That you're, you're supporting a lot of students with a lot of print activities, and if you never step in schools during the school day and see that, it's really hard to make that visual for people. So video is the best way to do it.
Do you have any specific ideas about how the meetings themselves would look? Like, Lori's going to lead it, or is Jake, or like the idea formation process, or are we farther away from that?
Jake is shaking his head no.
And I think we're looking at Lori to, um, lean under the guidance of support.
Yes, yeah.
So Lori, would you, like, do you think we just have three vague options? Do nothing, fix up the schools somehow, build a new school? Just three or four things so that we're sort of having an organizing framework to begin with?
Oh, gosh, yeah. That's a great question. So I say, oh, gosh, because I think it's important to let the facilities task force really wrangle with that without trying to direct where they may land with that. I think that all of the options will be organically discussed, right? Everybody will, will throw every option on the table, and I think that's important in the process because sometimes we can't see a solution until we throw everything on the table and start playing with all the different options. So I think that we need to be very clear with the facilities task force that everything is on the table for discussion, and see where that goes based on the identified needs, what the priorities are, and ultimately, people start to ask the budget question, how much money is it going to take to properly address our facilities, and what's the stamina for all of us in terms of our budget, and also the community willing to support and able to support, and how quick, right? So those are all things that we'll, we'll work through and ultimately make recommendations to the full board to make that big decision about what's the right way to go. And I think it's important that the facility task force, when we talk about that, it's really an advisory role to the full board. They're, they're doing a lot of the study, they're doing a lot of prioritization, and then ultimately, they're recommending and advising the board about what they think is the right, right solution. Ultimately, the board will decide.
What, Chris, what number of people do you think is the ideal amount to have? Like, I'm probably afraid we'll get no people, like five, and then we'll get like 50, so I don't know what the...
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great question. I, I think for a district your size, 15 to 20 is a good, robust number for a task force.
Including the board or not including?
Not including a board. Maybe, maybe including a couple of board members, like two or three, but if we're talking full board, like if all nine are going to participate, then, then I would say 20 is definitely what would be needed as a minimum, because I would want to make sure that, from outside looking in and for all of your constituents, that it looks like there's good representation from all segments of your community coming together to, to do this work.
So Lori, do you think that prior to having the task force meet at the board, I've heard you say a few times, as well as Julie said a few times, as identifying the needs? Do you think that the board should come together at some point soon or individually and send those needs that they can see as a board member and send those to Julie to begin that list from the board's perspective? Of course, what we see as needs is obviously different than what a staff member sees as a need. But we do see some of those needs.
Yeah, I, I would love to see you all have an opportunity to engage the staff yet before they leave for the, for the school year. And here, just be good listeners first, and then, and then I think it would be important for the board to share their reactions from what they hear, so that we can create some key messages to share at these first task force meetings.
So I'd be happy to schedule those, but my question is, we have enough room today in both our middle school and our high school. So my question is, if we have sit-down with staff, and perhaps as a board member, you can make one or two, maybe you make all of them. We know we want at least three at each elementary, but should I also schedule it at the two secondary buildings, even though the need isn't as great there?
I, I think you should, because we need to see what the needs are across the district in all of the buildings, because there may be some things that we're, we are overlooking in. Because there may be some things that we're, we are overlooking in the two secondary buildings that we're not seeing. I mean, we're focusing on the elementary buildings, but are there things in the middle school and high school? So I think we should see what the staff has to say.
Schedule them. And obviously, every board member won't, perhaps your schedule won't allow, but I'll try to mix it up with times of the day or evening and...
Well, and Julie, I'll, it, I'll listen into those, you know, so we let's schedule them together so I can participate.
Okay.
What I will do is I will take good notes of what people are saying so that we can create a summary report for the board. Um, so if you're not able to be at one of the sessions with the staff, you, you get the highlights of what was shared.
So do you think is this another opportunity to like record these and then you have just PR video billing?
Um, I made that face, yeah, because I, I want, I want staff to be vulnerable with you all, and I worry that if they feel like they're being videotaped in this particular kind of engagement, they may not come forward. My experience is, is I struggle enough to get them to, to think about their spaces and share what is a struggle for them. I worry that if they think they're, this is going to be captured for the whole public, that they will be, they'll be worried about their perception, right, uh, by the public.
So, speaking of that, would it, do you think it would be best to have, um, like, basically just have the board members there so that, you know, the staff can speak directly to the board, and what I mean by that is like, like administration principals that are there?
I think it's important for the principal to be there along with, um, you know, I think Jake should be at these, Julie should be at these, Katie should be at these. I think it's important for everybody to be hearing the same messages so that everybody can respond out in the community when someone asks, oh, I hear there's some, you know, struggles at the elementary school, then let, then you can speak to it, right? So I think there's value in having you all there. Um, and I would just say again, the, the videotaping of those sessions, I'm not sure is, is, is important as this, when we do a full community engagement process. The other thing I was going to say is that it's really important to think of those subgroups, the staff, that maybe you wouldn't capture during, um, you know, a session that's scheduled for teachers. So thinking about, do you need to set up a time specifically with your custodial maintenance staff? Do you need to set up a time specifically with your food service staff? Think, so just think about those different groups as well.
Would, would the, um, the community survey seek community responses on their, their feedback of needs?
Yes, yeah. So typically, we will survey on what's starting to show up as priorities in facility needs to see if that's a shared priority with your larger community, and that starts to shape maybe a possible solution moving forward.
When you say community, are you, are you, does that go beyond, um, the families of the district?
Yes, it, yeah. It includes even individuals who don't have children serve in the schools.
Okay, and what employers, the large employers?
Yes.
So you're gonna interview the staff, get a list of needs, and then you guys are gonna kind of compile it together for the task force so that you can somehow begin addressing it?
You got it.
We can give Kristen's earlier point, are, are we gonna stay at 1970s standards, are we gonna try and come current? Or is that just gonna be, uh, the question up to the task force, or does the board just gonna direct and say, our goal is to be current standards or...
I think that's great direction for the board to consider with their charge. So, um, you know, I think it would be very frustrating for task force to come together and think that they can dream big and give you some recommendations that take you to the, the next level, if you will, with your facilities, if the, if the, the board is really at a place where you want to just bring it up to today's standards, um, or vice versa, right? So I think that's an important consideration for a charge.
So to kind of follow what J D just asked, um, and because we're, for all, we're elected by the community, right? And we are the one they're going to have to answer for our, our recommendation and, and the direction we go. I think it's, it's important for this to be, um, almost like board, like board-led versus, no offense to Julie or any of the administrators, more board-led than administrator-led?
Correct.
Everybody involved, but because we're, we're gonna have to go back and answer, so, you know, if, if we do down the road, go down to or for a referendum, we want to make sure that it's brought by the board not, so we can justify that to our, our community.
You got it. Yep, absolutely.
You just have to, I don't want to do very much work, but Angie, you want to do a lot of work.
Lori, you've now met J D.
Well, I'm really looking forward to working with this group, and I don't know if I said this before, this is some of my most favorite work to do. And, um, you know, I told my partner, Joe Donovan, I'm a little junky when it comes to facilities. I love this work. So thank you for letting me support you in it. I'm really looking forward to the journey. I think the next steps are, um, to continue, you know, to, to reflect on this roadmap and give very good feedback to Julie if something comes up past our conversation tonight that you think is important, so that that can get conveyed here as well. But otherwise, I think we'll start working on the staff feedback sessions first and foremost, and let's, um, let's work through email perhaps, Julie, to set dates.
Okay.
Um, at least get the first two dates set for the task force meetings that are all calls to the community so that we can make sure those are in the calendar, and then, um, I think also the first meeting of the, the task force itself. Then from there, we can decide if we need to speed it up or slow down, but I think, again, we have a pretty aggressive schedule right now.
Okay.
I have two, two questions before we finish up. Um, the first one, when, when we are keen to, um, invite people to be on the task force, is there a way that your group can specifically, um, look for contractors or people, um, in our community that have like building experience or modeling experience, something like that, so that, you know, a lot of things, they can see things, you know, outside the box with the rest of our fancy?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, but when you first started speaking, my first thought is it's really important to have people on the task force who live within your school zones, if that makes sense. Um, it, it doesn't always go over well if an individual or a large majority of individuals on the task force don't live within the community. Um, so that's my first thought. Um, with regards to contractors and subcontractors, I think there is value if that's something that they're passionate about and they're passionate about, you know, the school facilities. I've had a lot of success in the past, particularly alumni, who want to come back and be a part of that process. It's really proven to be special when they come around on the backend, when there's some kind of construction renovation and they, they contribute, you know, their gifts and talents to a project. Um, but I, I think too, that might be something that we wait till later. If we're, if there's an ask to the community and there's actually, um, a building project that occurs, then there's an opportunity to bring in all your contractors, local contractors, subcontractors, to have them be a part of that process.
I guess I was thinking that they would be part of the process when we were like touring the schools and looking at all that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a lot of value to that, so if there's interest, let's get them on, let's get them on.
Okay. Um, and then my other question was, um, is, could you put together some kind of projection for, um, our district's, uh, future birth rate predictions?
Oh.
So we can...
Yes, I can. You have it? Okay. I'll cross that out. Okay.
Is Bray involved in the early process or are they way there?
Jake and I have discussed that too, and, um...
Yeah, we have. Because like Angie's looking for ideas for people like architects and people like that.
Well, I'm not architect because architects build, are in the building. I'm looking for construction people, people that have, look, can s, look at a space and say, well, if we did this, this and this, it would work better. That's, that's what I'm looking for, really. Architects look to build new, right? So...
Architects remodel. Architects do a lot of remodels.
Well, for the most part, they're gonna push more new building ahead of them. They're not gonna want to look at it and say, we can, we can move this wall, we can do this. That's why I would like to have more construction.
It seems like we need to just stay disciplined at identifying the needs and going from there, because it almost feels like we do start to jump the gun. Uh, I like the thought entirely, and, and if the needs go to that point, looking for people with expertise in certain areas, but I think we just need to stay very disciplined at identifying the needs, because we know that if we have to go to the community to ask, we haven't been successful. So we have to stay disciplined to say, here are identified needs, and we came to this conclusion in this manner, seeking feedback in X, Y, Z ways, and then from there went to, you know, what, what we're preparing or asking for. But it's hard not to come up with a solution, because that's typically what we do all the time, is solution.
Right.
We need to identify the needs to justify the solution, right?
Very wise, yep.
So Lori, I had, I think I've got just one more question, and that is with the, the board charge. Um, you know, that's something that we should draft early on, ideas, suggestions that you can work with Julie, that she can throw at us in, uh, in the building committee, and we can present that, possibly not this month, obviously, but in the month of June. Uh, maybe we can have a board charge that we want to present. Let it be perfected in the building grounds committee, and then bring it to the board.
That sounds great. We can definitely do that.
Homework, Angie.
Did that answer your question, Julie?
So you think Bray's gonna be willing to sit in, Andy's that way?
I think that right now we have Bray helping us with the capacity study, and that will help us make a decision on where we want to go. But I think that they would not likely be involved until the task force comes to a direction. You know, do we want to look at finding a solution to solve A, B, and C? And if we have to do something with buildings to solve those problems, then we would look to bring them on.
When are we gonna get the capacity study? Like, when we have it before the first, three of the task force studies?
Yes, it's basically done.
And that's what...
Roughly done right now. We actually have it on the end of the first tomorrow to polish up again and...
Do you know any contractors that would, I don't know, if you're a killer or something, you could arrest and not want to come? Is this...
Um, I can ask, there's, there's one that I think would be very valuable. I've spoken to him already, and his response was he'd like to see, uh, he'd like to see something that we're discussing tonight, what the roadmap looks like, what is the ask of him to be involved in this, um, how is it gonna go? You know, he doesn't want to come and spin his wheels, basically.
Like, I know you're, you're sort of a contractor, right, Bray?
Yeah, so, yes, I think, I think that person would, and we'll try to get as many as we can that are interested.
What Jake said about Bray is exactly what Julie and I talked about, too. Bringing Bray in later rather than earlier, after the needs are identified, uh, then they can help us with those polishing touches.
Any other questions or thoughts tonight?
Just to reiterate, the, um, step one is these four staff sessions to really get to...
Establish the needs.
To learn their needs.
Yeah, I think Andy had a question, too.
So, um, you were saying that if the board would come up with a charge for the facilities committee or task force, we won't do that until after their review?
No, 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 it'll, it'll come earlier rather than later. I just don't think it can be ready for May's board meeting, is what I'm saying.
Well, is it ready for the June facilities meeting?
Julie, when is, when is your May meeting?
Twenty-second.
We might be ready with a charge then. Um, let's talk about it, Julie, Danny, if we can...
Okay.
Get together. I think, I think it's doable by the twenty-second.
Do you see it being like a two-page document, or how long is a charge like that?
Basically a resolution, huh?
It's, it's a resolution, so it's typically a page.
A page, and would you say like, to our 1970s or current standards, like, do you put two aquas on there and at that board meeting we pick? Are you guys getting more suggestion one, or how do you view that?
I, I envision there being a suggestion in the resolution, then for the board to make adjustments to the resolution if they want to at the table.
Well, we'll see what we come up with, and then if we decide to put it on the agenda and go from there.
It sounds good. And Julie, I think I shared a sample, um, resolution charge with you a while back. I can share again, just maybe that might be something for some of the board members to take a look at so that they can kind of visually, you know, capture what that looks like.
Okay.
That's a great idea.
I will. We meet in the morning, so if I don't find it by now...
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're good.
Okay, let's do this. All right.
Thanks, Lori. Enjoy Florida.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Yeah, this one.
Thank you, everyone. I think it's awesome that we're all here.